Hey.
That's power right there, isn't it? Thank you guys for being here tonight. This is the April 8th, 2025 meeting of the Springdale School Board. We're thankful that you guys are here. And unfortunately, our student representative tonight had something come up last minute and can't make it. So Mr. Ramos's son Eli has volunteered to come up and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was gonna ask him some questions and see what he wanted to do. I don't know about that. All right, so brings us to approval of the agenda for tonight. Dr. Cleveland, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second, some of a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Brings us to the consent agenda. Have any changes to the consent agenda? Entertain a motion there.
I'll leave to the consent agenda.
Second.
Some of a motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to presentation by Dr. Cleveland.
Okay, well, thank you. Just as just kind of a word of introduction here, I was elected to be the AAEA Secretary of Director at the Administrator's Association. So that's about all that needs to be said about that. For viewers of the AAEA community, I'm appreciative of that. They can put a picture up there. Gosh.
Sorry about that. Sorry you had to suffer through that, but thank you for those who voted for me. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Pete Jinks to the podium.
Hold out the stand on the podium. I tower over all you guys.
Mr. Jinks. Before Mr. Jinks gets started, I'd also like to invite Ms. Hutton to the podium.
Absolutely.
I'll pull an old Dr. Rollins. Everybody that remembers Dr. Rollins, we'll just, we'll just. We're bringing, we're bringing Ms. Hutton to the podium to recognize her again because she's retired. And to bring her up in front, Pete, so he understands just exactly the difficulty that he's going to have.
Absolutely.
So Ms. Hutton, would you like to announce your replacement?
I would. Everyone, the new principal for Elmdale Elementary in '25-'26, Pete Jinks.
Well, everything goes full circle, huh? I, I was a first grader, they didn't kindergarten back to Elmdale when I first started there, but Roy Reed was my principal back then, and now I'm full circle, I'm coming back to Elmdale. So it's a delight and treat. I've had a great experience this year of being assistant. I got to work with Ms. Hutton, who is just phenomenal. As Dr. Cleveland said, it's just gonna be hard to fill her shoes because she is an incredible educator and she will be missed. But the kids are wonderful there. I can't think of a better faculty and staff to work with, and it just goes to show, an old dog can learn new tricks every once in a while. So I thank you for the opportunity. I thank Dr. Cleveland for the opportunity. And feel free to come by Elmdale and visit with us. We'd love to have you, and go Eagles.
Mr. Jinks remains an institution at Springdale Public Schools. We had some great candidates in the position. All three of them could have been principals, and we know that, and we fully expect all the other two who were not named to be principals soon, we love them 100%. Ms. Tisher?
Yes. Sorry, I had to stow the stool. I probably could have used it, though. I'm a little bit shorter. So I just want to welcome everyone to the April Board Meeting. We have a lot to celebrate tonight, which is always my favorite, when you see the boardroom full of students. Those are the best nights. And so first, I would like to begin by inviting Ms. Mariah Gils from Harbor High School to join me at the podium. So Ms. Gils is an art teacher at Harbor High School, and she recently received a national award. And I'm gonna let her tell you about it, but the National Art Education Association has awarded Ms. Gils with the Outstanding Curriculum Award for this year. She was just honored at the national conference and was able to present a whole session on her curriculum, Ecological Pedagogy, in her art class. And I'll let her tell you just a little bit about that. But I want you to know that in Springdale, as we've said before, we are so blessed with amazing art teachers, K through 12. I cannot say that enough. Every time I get the opportunity, I wanna let you know, to be honored at the national level is a tremendous deal. And even to be asked to present at the national level, there are thousands of applications to present. And so not only has she been selected as a presenter, but to receive this award's a really, really big deal. So I'm gonna let her tell you just a little bit about it. Oh, here she is, receiving it. You can click to yourself.
Awesome. Thank you so much. It was really a wonderful opportunity to present this research at the national level and to receive this award. It was super cool. I started this landfill project, it's called EcoPedagogy in Action, at the Don Tyson School of Innovation last year, and was supported by the amazing administrators there and the teachers as well. And so it was a curriculum project that I took my students to the landfill, and we experienced all of the things trash, because I was starting to wonder, like, do they have the connection between, like, throwing it in the trash can to where it ends up in the future? And the best way to kind of experience that is to have a firsthand account. And so through this experience, they were able to see exactly where their trash goes. So if you ever get the experience to go to landfill, I would 100% recommend it. I've been twice now, and it is like, it blows my mind every time. So then we came back to the classroom and did some drawing in our journals and reflection, and then we started making art about our experience as well. And we also went on a nature walk to kind of juxtapose, like, ooh, that's a lot of trash. And also, okay, this is what nature can be like without man corrupting it. And yeah, they made some really amazing artworks, and here are some examples of artworks that we made in our classroom. They had lots of choice over what they would make, and they just really let their voices shine on the topic of their experiences. So it was just wonderful, and I'm so thankful that I work in a district that is supportive of the arts and, you know, allowed this kind of experience to flourish and for them to take this, you know, for the rest of their lives as well. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is another art highlight, quickly. Last Thursday, so it'd be April 3rd, at Southwest Junior High, the secondary school, so that's grade 6 through 12, had their second annual art show. And so as you know, at the new Southwest Junior High, it's the perfect site because it's all wide open, community space, when you first walk into the building. And so artworks from our middle schools, junior highs, and high schools were all exhibited and displayed for parents, students, community members. There were food trucks there, there were other vendors there. Parents were invited by each of the schools to come and see their students' art on display. And so I have just a couple of highlights from that evening there for you as well. And just so you know, Mind Officially Blown, the ballet shoes, that was drawn by a sixth grader, I believe at J.O. Kelly Middle School. I hope I said the correct school, sixth grade. And so the talent that was on display was actually just mind blowing. I'm pretty sure those pancakes were made out of toilet paper. How, I do not know. But it was just, like I said, it was a night to celebrate multiple mediums of art. It was so wonderful to see parents and students and family members all together enjoying that space. And just to see what Southwest can actually produce with that brand new, beautiful facility, open space, community event wise. I do want to thank Holly Hamblin. She is the art teacher at Southwest Junior High who agreed to be the point person to kind of help coordinate this whole event. And the art teachers across the district all worked together as a great team. And we also had some different community sponsors and things of that nature to make it a great night. So that is all for me. Does anyone have any questions? All right. On to the next item.
We actually have somebody in front. We're gonna recognize.
Yes, sir. All right. Good evening, Board. Dr. Cleveland, Leanne, it's good to see everybody tonight. We had the pleasure of doing a couple celebrations tonight, and one is very dear to my heart. She's a personal friend, great professional. She's extremely humble in what she does. She goes above and beyond in everything she does. She's a mentor, she's a friend, and a motivator, and she is the second parent to many. And so it's my honor to bring her up front, and it is your 6A Coach of the Year, Heather Hunsucker.
I heard Kim Caldwell say, the Tennessee coach, that coaching is not, is not always about proving people wrong, but about proving the people right that believed in you the most. So, Mr. Jinks, is he, did he leave? I wanted to thank him because he's the one that hired me at Springdale and took a chance on me when I was very young. I wanna thank our school board for hiring me back then, and also, I've got these amazing players that believed in everything that we did. I've got a staff, I've got a principal. Springdale is a great place to work. But I was honored to prove people right that have believed in me since I've been very young in this business. And the other honor is to prove, to prove people right, that Springdale is a great place to play athletics and a great place to go to school. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to be educated. It is my honor, when I step on the court, to represent Springdale High School. I love Springdale High School, but I love these players and our parents even more. And we have great families that had a belief the whole time that we could do this. This is not a Coach of the Year Award, it's a Player and a Family of the Year Award, it's a School District Award. Thank you for our gym, thank you for our facilities, thank you for believing enough in us enough to do that for this district over and over again. I get, wow. Thank you. It's my honor to be your head coach at Springdale High School. Full surprises tonight, full surprises. All right, they said the next slide's us. All right. Goodness, what a historic year, really historic. And these kids love to be historic, they love it. I'm all about it, too. Walter Woody keeps the records for years and years and years. We've got the very first book of Five on Five up in our trophy case, we found it. And Coach Early's dad was one of the coaches in the very first games against us, it was so cool. We had it up at the state tournament. So we're all about history. For the first time ever, we can say that we're conference champions. That's never been done. We, we had the best conference start in school history when we went 8-0. We beat Northside to start, our very first game in conference in the new arena. We had not beaten Northside in 28 years at Springdale. And that was a way to kick off the arena like no other. You know, we were all celebrating, kids went crazy in the locker room, it was a lot of fun. We had the most conference wins in school history, we were 14 and 2. And we won the Little Rock Tournament Championship, we won the Carl Junction Championship, and we became runner-up in our own tournament, the Red Dog Invitational, to a team that was in the Final Four, the 5A Mountain Home, really, really good team that we lost to. We were 25 and 5, that's the most wins in school history, that's tied for the least losses in school history. It's just a lot of really cool stuff that we're gonna get to celebrate soon again at the banquet for our kids. We had five all-conference selections. If you were all-conference, girls, please stand up or wave your hands. Some of you are standing. Come on, Kaia, Kiara. Charlene, stand up. Did you stand up? Stand up. Carolina. We had three players that will all-conference honorable mention. Wave, stand up. Ally, where are you? Ally, Ally. All right. Letty, did you stand up? Wave at least. All right. We had the 6A West Player of the Year, Ms. Charlene Hudson. I'm not sure if the school board knows this, but Charlene and Carolina, Carolina's, her sister, that got all-conference, they do free basketball trainings on Saturdays with their family for the students in our district at J.O. Kelly, and they do that on their own time. They volunteer, they do not charge anything, it's totally free for our community, and that is a really cool way to give back. And I'm so proud that they do that for our community. Their family does that also, their mom is here, thank you for what you do, and their dad, and it's just a really cool thing. The Defensive Player of the Year, she definitely deserved it, she's also a junior, family's really special to me, Ms. Kaia McCoy. Kaia, if I was the point guard nowadays, Kaia would scare me, too. I would hate to dribble, matter of fact, I don't dribble against her. We had two recognitions for Ms. Charlene Hudson. She was on the All-State Tournament Team, but most recently, they did a statewide Northwest Arkansas Democrat Gazette, I mean, not, excuse me, not Northwest, the Democrat Gazette, they did a all-preps team, and she was on the first team, which means she was ranked the top five players in the whole state of Arkansas regardless of classification. And, you know, I could put more individual awards, like Adriana was named all-conference, Kiara was named all-conference, Kaia all-conference, Charlene, I mean, excuse me, all-tournament. Like, we had all these really cool awards for these players, and, but I just wish you could see them in the halls, and I wish you could see them work, you know? They stay in the gym hours, they're over there all the time working, they're great, there's not been a detention with our kids, they're not tardy, they're not truant, they're, they just do the right thing. We had 21 of our 30 players with a 3.6 or higher. 21 of 30. They just do right, and I've always believed that if you do right, great things happen. And really proud of them, I can't say enough about them. Thank you for honoring us and taking time for this. It sure means a lot to us. Thank you.
Super proud to introduce this next group, boys' basketball team at Springdale High. They had a great, great season, they fought hard, and the thing I'm most proud of is they represented themselves well, and they represented Springdale High well. And so, super proud, so I'm gonna introduce these guys, great list of honors, you'll see 6A West Conference Champions, overall record 29 and 4, undefeated conference season, they were the King Cotton Classic Tournament Champions, I think they're the, only the fourth team, maybe in the state of Arkansas that's won that tournament, so very prestigious tournament. 6A West Player of the Year, I'll have him stand up, Isaiah Sealy. 6A West Newcomer of the Year, Malik Sosa. 6A West Defensive Player of the Year, Jackson Conley. We've got three All-State selections, Isaiah, Jackson, and Cy Bates. Cy's, he's on a college tour this evening, so he's, he was gone from school today. All-conference selections, Isaiah, Conley, Sosa, and DJ Hudson. Just real quick, I'm gonna introduce the rest of these guys, and I'll hit these coaches last, but Holden Plant, where's Holden at? Over here. Isaiah, guy here on the end. Javion Phillips. Dante Jones. Kenyon Thomas. Right here, we got Alex Conley. I would say none of this could be done if it wasn't for great coaches, so I wanna shout out to Coach Sealy right here. And we got Coach Cotton sitting next to him. Great group of guys, really proud of them, great season, and looking forward to getting to work and see what happens next season.
I didn't know I was supposed to introduce our players, I'm sorry. Ms. Tisher brought me back. Okay, this is, I'd really like y'all to stand up, people can't see you over here. Stand up. Adriana Hernandez. Adriana's a senior, and she will be continuing her academic and athletic career at Connor State. She just committed. This is our manager, Tiffany Boas. This young lady's been with us from George all the way up, and this is Letitia Ramirez. She's gonna do big things, she's a senior. This is Tori Miller, she's a junior. We've got the sisters, this is Charlene Hudson, the youngest sister, stand up, yes, she's a junior. Can't tell she's a character, can you? The oldest sister, her senior, Carolina. Carolina is gonna graduate from SOI with her associate's degree in hand out the door. Okay? This is Kay Marie Richardson, we call her Kay. Kim Rios, she is a senior. This is our volunteer, Alea Nava Robinson. In the back, we have our junior, Ms. Alexa, wave your hand. We have a senior, our Kia, even though they said it wrong, right? Kaia on the thing, Kia Dixon. She has a college tour and will most likely get an offer tomorrow to continue her athletic and academic career. This is Ms. Kiara Owens, senior, she will continue her athletic and academic career as well. She's going to Seward County Community College, it's a Division One Community College, one of the best in the country for women's basketball. So she's gonna be signing on the 16th. And this is junior Kaia McCoy. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, girls. This is senior Madden Brooks, stand up. Madden, Madden, I just noticed the other day, she's one of the top five in GPA graduates gonna happen at Springdale High School. And she's gonna continue at the University of Ozarks with athletics and academics. And this is Caroline McVeigh, if you'll stand up. Caroline, I've known forever as well, and she's gonna graduate with her associate's degree from SOI in hand as she walks out the doors. So, oh. Oh, sorry. Okay, see, I'm, this is, stand up, Destiny. I call her, this is Destiny Januna. She goes by Januni. She's a junior, and she will be back with us next year. And the only sophomore that got to play varsity, we had a lot of sophomores. Only sophomore on varsity was Ms. Ally Vaughn. She'll be back with us next year. Okay. Now I'm done.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cleveland and Board, for an opportunity to speak a little bit about our girls' and boys' basketball team. I do want to congratulate Springdale High School on a great season. I want to congratulate Coach Fimple and also Mr. Jones for doing a great job of hosting the tournament. I know Mr. Jones, you know, helped Harbor out whenever needed, and so I want to just publicly thank him for, again, just being a great supporter of athletics throughout our district. You know, I could speak a lot about our girls' and boys' basketball teams. They were a fun group to watch. I'd like to introduce Coach Jenkins first. And as she comes to the podium, let me just say a few things that I observed about her team. Coach Jenkins is one that speaks about one team, unity. And when you watch this very young group of young ladies play, you can see the enthusiasm. You can see that they are bought into the vision. And so, again, I want to congratulate these young ladies on an outstanding season. I know that any time you don't win the state championship, it feels like a little bit of a disappointment. But again, we're young, and we're just excited about the future. So I want to turn it over to her and just, again, congratulate our girls on an outstanding season.
Thank you for having us. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Being in second is not where we want to be standing. So it's hard to, you know, have that good feeling about that finish when we know we wanted to finish better. And we had some great accomplishments this year. As you can see, 25 and 6, I think, is the best record in Harbor history for the girls' program. So that's very exciting. A conference record, a chance to compete for the conference championship. We've won two in the past seven years, so we're right there on the cusp every year of having a very competitive program every year. JV had a great year at 16 and 5, so really proud of the body of work that our kids did this year. We had four all-conference selections that are here with me tonight. Madison McKinley Campbell, Brooke Owens, and Jasmine MacArthur. You guys want to stand up real quick? All four of those players averaged in double figures this year and did a great job for us. We had two on the all-defensive team this year, and that is Jasmine MacArthur and Madison Campbell. Stand back up. They're just dogs on defense and do a great job for us and made our team go as far as pressure went this year. And then we had two, to say, that's our twins, Madison McKinley Campbell. And those two that are, you know, they're sophomores. So, you know, this is the second year in a row that McKinley Campbell has been an all-state selection. So she has an opportunity to continue that. So we're very proud of our youth in our program. We only had two seniors this year, which was Jasmine MacArthur and Brooklyn Owens. Brooklyn is going to continue her academic and athletic career with an athletic scholarship at Drew University. And Jasmine MacArthur will be signing with Fort Scott Community College on this next Wednesday to continue her academic and athletic as well. We had a big year. We did a lot of fun things, from our book studies to, you know, just team time, Christmas parties. You know, when we get a five-second count, we get, sometimes we get cookie cakes and we celebrate. These girls are just very, had very great chemistry this year and very proud of the body of work that they did. So we're really proud that they're all here tonight with us. And we didn't have them all come tonight. We've got some different things going on, you know, with the spring sports and all that kind of thing. But the ones that came, we're very proud. And besides the two that are graduating, everybody will be back next year, and we're excited to continue the tradition of success at Harbor. So thank you for having us.
One piece that I forgot to mention, you know, and Coach Jenkins is a little bit too humble. You know, to win 600 games in 25 years speaks that, you know, seasons like we just experienced aren't just, you know, accident. This is a coach that knows how to get our kids prepared, has a, you know, tradition of winning. And so, congratulations, Coach, on just such a rich career. We're proud of you. Next up, I'd like to introduce Coach Duffenbaugh. And our boys' basketball team was a lot of fun to watch. You know, I think of myself when I was a youth playing basketball, and there's no way that I would want to compete against these young men. They just work hard. They perform hard. And again, they represent our school well. And, you know, over the past few years, Harbor's put up some incredible numbers. And so, we want to celebrate the Harbor Boys Basketball Team. And let me introduce Tommy Duffenbaugh, our head coach.
Wildcats, let's go. All right. My name is Tommy Duffenbaugh. It's a privilege, really is, to be here tonight with you guys. Thank you so much for having us. I'd like to first thank the board members, Dr. Cleveland, for all you guys do for Springdale Athletics. It's awesome. We appreciate everything. Our team had another really good year. We finished 20 and 11 overall. We were second in 6A West Conference. Back-to-back semifinals last year and this year. We had four players all-conference this season, which is really good for us. Bari Washington, Marley, Hayden Wood, and Courtland Muldrew. And we had two All-Staters, my two seniors, were really good, ranked in the top three in our league. Hayden Wood was all-state. Courtland Muldrew finished as the all-time leading scorer in the 6A West Conference. He outscored Malik Munk, who plays for Sacramento. I couldn't be more proud of these guys for all they do for us every single day. They come to work. They work hard. My coaches, Nathan Patoff right here behind me. Zondi couldn't make it tonight. My managers, I got the two best managers. I don't know what Springdale managers are like, or the Wildcat girls' manager. But I'll tell you what, I've got two good ones right back there. Give it a wave. They get water. They get our dirty clothes at times. They keep the score every practice. I couldn't thank you guys more. We're going to lose Riley this year. She is a senior, and she's going to be heading off to Oklahoma State. So we're going to miss her. We're already just auditioning to take, to find someone to take her place because she's hard to replace. Last year, we were 28 and 3. We were conference champs, the most wins in the school history. And these guys make me a lot better coach, I can tell you that. Courtland will be attending the University of Washington. Hayden Wood will be attending Jacksonville University on full-ride basketball scholarships. Thank you guys again for all your support, and we're looking forward to next year. Go Cats.
You just got cooler in here. Hey, sit on the right side. Yeah, well, I'll see when you leave.
Those of you that are standing up on one side of the floor are welcome to come sit down on the other side of the floor if you want.
There's seats over here.
You guys want to come have a seat over here? If you're standing, you can.
Sure, welcome to. I guess the president has his seat.
But he really wanted to sit there.
Okay. Well, I'd like to invite Ms. Sarah Kennedy and Ms. Karen Johnson to the podium to talk about our Aspiring Administrator Academy. Go Word One. There they are.
All right. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Cleveland. I'm Sarah Kennedy. I'm the Assistant Principal at Young. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight about the Springdale Aspiring Administrator Academy. So we began this work last year as a group of current assistant principals and our central office administration team. And we had the intention of building future administrators. So our goal was to share the ins and outs of the assistant principal role. So we created a mission and vision to help guide our work. So our vision was to grow the capacity of aspiring principals to lead with confidence and competence. And our mission was to develop aspiring administrators by providing transparent and relevant learning experiences, equipping them with applicable tools, fostering connections, and empowering them to be problem solvers. And we also developed an application process to help select amazing candidates like we have right here. And then we created monthly sessions to dive deeper into being an assistant principal. So now Karen Johnson's going to share more about the incredible work that our participants did this year.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Cleveland. I think I can say for the talk for the entire A3 Planning Committee, when I say we learned just as much from this experience as our participants. So all the A3 Committee, they're all standing around or sitting over here. We were able to grow and learn together as we planned and led the sessions. I cannot express enough how amazing our first cohort. They are amazing. They ask great questions. They really helped us dive deep and reflect on what is the assistant principal role. And they also took time away from their family and their busy schedules to experience some of what it is like to be in our role. For example, they came to some of our sporting events, some of the activities that we held during the school day. So again, thank you to Dr. Cleveland, Dr. Smith, Ms. Fink, Ms. Tisher, and the Board for allowing us to host this academy. At this time, I'm excited to invite two of the participants to share with you their experience, their perspective of the experience. So first, we're going to hear from Jose Luna, who has been a school psychology specialist since 2022 for the Springdale Public Schools. So he's going to make his way here.
Thank you, Board, Dr. Cleveland. Thank you for having us. You know, like she mentioned, APs coming together with district admin to create something new, to give us the experiences and just the knowledge. And so, but also, it's their week, so happy AP Week to all the administrators that helped with this. But this is not my first time standing up here. I don't know if y'all remember, my first time up here was I'd just been awarded the School Psychology Rookie of the Year. And y'all had asked, you know, what brought you to Springdale? And I don't remember what I said, but I can confidently say now that it's really the family aspect, the Springdale family. Some of my colleagues surprised me today. You know, they're here randomly, just, you know, after inquiring, like, how's that going? What are you learning? And then being able to be here and just, you know, it's so welcoming. But regarding the academy, I can say that in the work that I do as a school psychology specialist, like, I work closely with APs. I, you know, go throughout the district supporting and advocating for our staff and our students. But this provided such a unique perspective of, you know, what they have going on day to day with their, you know, roles and duties and responsibilities. And then just being able to now take that knowledge and those experiences and view what I do through that perspective and through that lens and continue the work of advocating for students. So, you know, one of the things that stuck out was the, you know, complex change matrix and just being able to view, you know, certain things through that perspective. Like, how are we supporting our staff? Are we providing them the resources that they need? And then, do they have the time? You know, is the value and mission there behind that? So that was amazing. I got to go to a basketball game with Ms. Barker and work that experience and enjoy watching the Springdale team play. So it was all good. And so, again, just great experience, great knowledge, great, you know, the APs that were able to present, the people that came in to provide even further context. Mr. Donnell came and provided some insights. And Ms. Ingram came and provided insight about, you know, the Special Education Department and just ESL, and just everybody coming together provided some great experiences that I get to now go about my day with that perspective and that lens of, you know, what they do in day in, day in, day out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. He was a valuable participant and provided a lot of insight. Next up, we have Ms. Heather Miller. She is an instructional facilitator at George Elementary, and she has been there for the past five years.
Good evening. I was fortunate enough to be given the opportunity this school year to be part of the Aspiring Administrators Academy. Through this experience, I was able to gain valuable knowledge and insight from district leaders, collaborate with colleagues from across the district, network with district leaders and administrators, shadow administrators in other buildings, and learn from district experts. These learning opportunities included advice, real-world experiences, and information that will help me succeed as I hopefully one day move into an administrator's position. Due to this invaluable experience, I feel more prepared and confident in my abilities to follow school law, individualize educational opportunities for students, and build meaningful relationships and connections with students, families, and staff, which was a huge part of our mission for this academy. I'm very grateful to Springdale Public Schools for investing in me and my educational leadership growth. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Always feel like I try to be a part of the curriculum and instruction team, and tonight's finally my opportunity. Dr. Smith is unable to be with us tonight, and so she asked me to present the graduates, we'll say, of the Aspiring Administrator Academy with their certificates. I do know that she is so proud of this project, not just for the individuals that completed the project, but also for the leaders who conceptualized this and carried it out. So she wanted me to convey that with you. It has also been fun this year to see different participants in different places across the district. Jose mentioned he went to a Springdale High School game. It was fun to see elementary people in the student section at a high school basketball game. And then on the flip side, to see secondary people in the elementary car rider line. New experiences for lots of people. So I will recognize all of the participants, ask them to come up along with their mentor, and they will be presented with a certificate. Once they are done, they're going to go outside and take a group picture. And they also are not done for tonight. When they leave here, they're going to participate in mock interviews tonight. So the first group of participants with their mentor, Betsy Barker. I have Tyler Wilder. And Heather Van Orden. With their mentor, Cassie Marquette. We have Bethany Sebhar. Natalie Gregory. And Mandy Graham. With their mentor, Dory Little. We have Jessica Ghana. Daniel Cottle. And Noemi Strowinski. With their mentor, Jody Johnson. We have Shannon Langston. Heather Miller. And Danell Lago Marcino.
I think we have a long shot.
Okay, I'll slow down. Okay, I'll slow down.
I think Katie's a little slow in the church.
Okay, I'm used to graduation where they're reading them so fast. Yes. With their mentor, Karen Johnson, we have Lily Dickard. And with their mentor, Ashley Kirby, we have Rebecca Bramwell. With their mentor, Lindsay Hennerix, we have Debbie Coffler. With their mentor, Brandon Peterson, we have Jose Luna. With their mentor, Sarah Kennedy, we have Jody Northcutt. With their mentor, Stephanie Henze, we have Emma Clay. And with their mentor, Katie Wilson, who someone's going to have to sub in to take pictures, we have Michael Tapi. And Kristy Schragger. Congratulations to all the aspiring administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson, members of the Board, Dr. Cleveland. Some people say, I hear a lot of people say, oh, I gotta go to work tomorrow, but I get to say, I get to go to work and work with all of these guys, man. It's like amazing every day. It is awesome. I wrote some stuff tonight, and I really don't like to read, but I'm going to read some of this because it's important to say it all. It's my privilege tonight to stand before you and recognize the outstanding accomplishments of our Springdale Band and Choir programs. Across the district, we have over 4,700 students participating in band and choir. That's 4,700 students who are not just learning music, but building discipline, teamwork, creativity, and leadership. And most importantly, that's 4,700 opportunities for students to earn college scholarships using their voices and instruments to help fund their dreams, no matter what their career choice, path that they choose. This year, we celebrate an extraordinary number of all-region and all-state musicians, a testament to the dedication of our students and relentless commitment of our directors. In addition, our programs were represented with excellence at the American Core Directors' Association, an honor that places Springdale among the finest music programs in the nation. These recognitions are not just accolades, they are evidence of the remarkable talent and perseverance within our school. But beyond the awards and achievements, research consistently supports what we already know. Students who participate in band and choir perform better academically. Studies show that the music students score higher on standardized tests, achieve higher GPAs, and are more likely to graduate from college. The discipline required to master an instrument or perfect your vocal performance translates to success in the classroom. These students learn problem solving, time management, and collaboration, all essential skills for any career path they choose. Tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize the heart of this success, our dedicated band and choir directors. These educators go far beyond the classroom, investing countless hours before and after school, on weekends, and during the summer, ensuring that our students have every opportunity to thrive. Their impact extends beyond the class, beyond music. They are mentors, role models, and advocates, helping shape the lives of thousands of students in Springdale. To our directors, your hard work is seen, your passion is appreciated, and your influence is immeasurable. Because of you, our students are not only excelling in music, but also in life. To our school board and district leadership, thank you for continuing to support the arts in Springdale. Every investment in our music program is an investment in student success. And tonight, I want to just take you through just a brief snapshot of what these guys do each and every day. 745 all-region students qualifiers this year, and 106 all-state qualifiers, and 11 American Core Director Association qualifiers. I've made a little graphic here to see just the improvement they made over last year. There's a plus 45 on all-region qualifiers and plus 11 on all-state qualifiers. That's pretty darn amazing. Also, we've developed quite a partnership with the Smeeding Foundation, who last year gave a generous contribution of $24,000 to fund adjunct tutors, which allows a student to have kind of a private tutor lesson, one-on-one or in a group. And that's something that we're very appreciative of. We've also applied for that again this year and applied for double funding of that so we can impact even more kids. So just know that. We're keeping our fingers crossed with the Smeeding Foundation Incorporated. Okay, first up, Harbor High School, 87 high school all-region students and 28 all-state students. Mr. Ford, do you want to add anything to that?
Nope, that's what happened.
All right, way to go. Springdale High School, 51 high school all-region students and six all-staters. Mr. Stevens.
Very gratitude.
All right, absolutely. Don Tyson School of Innovation, Mr. Key today is, we had a split assessment where they assess in March and then also they assess in April, and he's actually in the assessment right now, running that assessment. But I want to say this, since Don Tyson is, you know, a K-12 school, they actually have junior high all-region there as well. So they have 46 junior high all-region students, 49 high school all-region students, and 17 all-staters, which is just outstanding. And there's a little bit of the work there with the jazz band, the all-state students as well. And then we get to Central Junior High School, which is a kind of a unique story. We had a teacher that went on maternity leave this year, and we got to experience Jan Bosman again. I mean, that's like, that's like, that's like. Jan Bosman came back in, and we also, we'll get to her part in a minute, but they had 53 junior high all-region students make it out of all of that, and she was a big part of that as well. So, absolutely. Southwest Junior High School.
We got anybody here from Southside here?
Okay, so no one's here, but they had 44 all-region students. You can see they had orchestra students, jazz band students, and all-region students, which is really wonderful. Lakeside Junior High, do we have anybody from Lakeside? Okay, well, I will tell, oh, that's right, their assessment as well right now. So I will say something. I'm super proud of Lakeside. They were selected as the Triple E Honor Band at the Arkansas All-State Conference, and that's a really high prestigious honor. It got snowed out, they didn't get to perform, but they still got to perform in other ways. So it's really a great high honor, and they had 28 all-region players this year. And then, last but not least, but George Junior High School Band, do we have anybody from George here? Kennedy? No? So assessment as well? Okay. So then, 28 all-region players there as well, and we are super proud of that team that's at George and just really taking that, I think they had seven-ish last year? They went from seven to 28, which is just outstanding work. And then here is some work that I'm just going to brag on Mr. Stevens and Mr. Ford here just for a moment. I've done marching band, okay? The wet feet, who's done marching band? We're ready. Wet feet, just hot, I mean, like crazy hot all the time, and for these guys to consistently get first divisions in marching band, year after year after year after year for 20, 30 years, it's just pretty amazing feat. Congratulations. Just to let you know what this is, it's marching band assessment, the one is the highest you can get, the five is the lowest you can get. So you can see all of our bands are performing in the one and two division right there, and the composite score is what you want to look at on that column, and then sight reading as well as just a piece that's put in front of them, they've never seen it before, and they get graded, they get, what, 10 minutes to look at it? And then they get graded one to five on how well they played that piece, which is a testament to teaching, because if you can't play the piece, then you weren't taught how to play to begin with. Does that make sense? So that's a really good testament to their teaching abilities. And then we move on to choir, which is district choir students, 11 National ACDA Honored Choir members. Mr. Penalto, anybody want to talk about that just for a minute?
5,000 applications, got 400 kids nationally. It's a huge honor, developed Dallas and saying, with some of the best clinicians in the world. So we have a huge experience.
Massive honor for those students. And then on top of that, we have Harbor High School Choir with 98 all-region students and 35 all-state. Mr. Penalto, you want to say anything with that?
Awesome, Nash, you have this first chair, and it actually went up to 36 on top of the column.
36 all-staters, why don't I bump that number up?
State champions as far as the most, so we're pleased with that. Five years.
Absolutely. And then next, we have Springdale High School with 36 high school all-region players and seven all-staters. Ms. Peters, you want to say anything?
Well, we almost doubled our all-state numbers from last year, last year four, and this year seven, so hopefully she needs to.
Keep moving. Absolutely. And then, Don Tyson School of Innovation, she had 43 junior high all-region, because again, they're K-12, and then they had 30 all-region high school students and 13 all-staters, did a lot of work there as well, and just really wound up good. And then also, DT SOI will be performing or competing at state CPA on April 10th as well. And then Central Junior High School, Ms. Terry and Mr. Rothmeyer, they had 68 all-region players. Do either one of y'all want to say?
Super proud of them. They're all my dogs.
Okay, all right, yeah. And then last but not, oops, sorry, not last but not least, Southwest Junior High School had 38 all-region players. Michelle Walter, you want to say?
Amazing kids.
Amazing kids. He had some great ones there. And then Lakeside Junior High, Mr. Ben Nguyen, I saw him here earlier. Do you want to say anything about the 29 all-region players?
I just wanted to really grab, really brag about Lakeside. This is my third year in the district, and I stepped into the head role this year. This is in recent history, the most students from Lakeside we've had make the all-region choir, and it was really, really pride is stealing to see just the ownership they had and the money to accomplish that goal. We had 150 kids audition, so they have 29 to make it, and they get 30 on the actual day, and it was very, it was something to be very proud of.
Very awesome. And then, last but not least, we had George Junior High with 16 all-region players, and we have, we have, Mr. Dex, you want to say?
No, just too proud of them, they worked really hard for it.
Okay. And then also, choral performance assessment has happened also, and the neat thing about choral performance, they actually give you a score from each judge as well, so you can see their scores, and you can see that on their composite scores, they consistently just land right in that one, two division, which is great. Remember, one's the highest you can get, five is the lowest you can get. So again, very proud of the work that they are doing. This is hours and hours and hours and hours of work right there that you're looking at, just tons of time. And this is really, any of these assessments are really like a student's state assessment. So that's their state assessment that they have, which is really fantastic. I mean, I go sometimes when I'm a little stressed out to these choral performance assessments, and it's just like my whole heart is just rejuvenated. So it's a pretty neat little thing to do. And then last but not least, we have a fine art celebration we'd like to invite you to. It's on Friday, May 9th. That's where we celebrate all the fine art students, choir, and band who have scholarships on anything. And so, Dr. Cleveland was there last year, it's a fantastic event. We have a good time that night, it's about an hour long. We don't like to extend it out real long, so it's just an hour event. We recognize everyone with their school flag, and we have them sign, and it's just really neat. We have a reception afterwards if you want to come join us on that night. We'll be sending you another invite to that as well. Okay? Thank you, guys, for being here. I have a question. Yes, I should have said that, any questions?
The 4,700 participants, is that K-12 or is that?
That's six through 12.
Six through 12.
Yes, choir and band. Because remember, in Don Tyson, they start in six.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's about 30% of that population.
They pull in a lot of kids.
That's a lot of, that's a big difference.
Absolutely.
And these are all the teachers you see?
Yes.
I didn't mean it that way. I didn't mean it that way.
Look, with band and choir, if you calculated what these wonderful, amazing people do for our kids as far as the ones who travel into higher ed or even to the world of work, if you translated that into money, that surprises the times. I mean, I talked to Mr. Ford one day about all the kids who get to go to college, and I can't even remember the mind-boggling number he told me several years ago, and then when Mr. Penalto was trying to help me learn how to sing even Trent Rogers songs. We talked about that, too.
I guess what's always blown my mind is the middle school and the junior high choirs and bands' talent level that transfers to the senior high. It's, I mean, some of the middle school choirs, I mean, it's got to obviously start in elementary school, but man, it's always been there. I've been on board 13 years, and it's just never flipped.
I'll say another little piece, and then we say this all the time when we meet as a team, that I don't know if you realize this, but a lot of school districts start in sixth grade, okay? So these guys right here, if you're looking at, have to make up a year's worth of work in the seventh grade, because they've got to make up all the sixth grade where they didn't have it, and make it all the way up to catch them up to eighth grade. And they do that masterfully, all these guys. So it's really a testament to their hard work, because they could just say, we're just going to come to work, and no, they don't do that. They're like, how can we make this better? How can we make this better each and every year? Which is really magnificent. So.
Great job. Thank you.
I have one last share. Very fond of a former Central student at Harbor High School, is in the second round of the Voice right now. That's awesome. He's about 32, so he's been working at this for a while.
I didn't even have a clue, somebody at Counselor stopped me and said, one of our kids, check him out on the Voice.
Tonight, I'll be sharing some important transitions with school safety, one that ensures consistency, strengthens cooperation, and allows us to be responsible stewards of district resources while, at the same time, maintaining the highest level of security for our student staff and visitors. As we move forward, we'll be transitioning from school resource officers to commissioned school resource officers at Rollins Elementary, aligning it with the security model already in place at 17 other elementary schools. Additionally, we will implement this transition at our four middle schools. These changes are fully supported by Chief Wright and the Springdale Police Department, and Chief Dennison at the Tonnytown Police Department. We continue to maintain strong partnerships with both the Springdale and Tonnytown Police Departments, working Departments, working seamlessly as a team through cross-training, which we do often, I mean, probably once a semester at least, and collaboration. Our commitment to safety remains unwavering, and our students and staff and community can have full confidence that we're providing the highest level of security at all campuses. Over the last several weeks, I've had the privilege of discussing this transition with Springdale and Tonnytown Police Departments, middle school administrators, and many staff members. I want to express my gratitude to all of these stakeholders for helping me make this seamless transition. On the screen in front of you, you can see what this transition looks like. I always look for the little laser pointer, and I never can find it. Is that it? Yeah, that's it. So you can see right here, we currently have an SRO at Tonnytown, and we'll be transitioning that to a CSSO, and these four middle schools, we currently have SROs that will be transitioning to CSSO. So you can see now, we'll go from 18 CSSOs to 16, we started with 18 CSSOs and 16 SROs, and next year, we'll have 23 CSSOs and 11 SROs. And again, I want to tell you that I had long conversations with both Chief Wright, his captain, his new captain, Captain Pena, which congratulations, it was just announced, and then also Chief Dennison, and they're fully in support of this, 100%. So, any questions that you have with that?
There isn't cost savings after you move on that. Don't worry about cost.
Yep. I think it's a great move, we have some outstanding CSSOs that we've been really blessed with retired, we have a former Navy SEAL, we have former Arkansas State Troopers, we have former Springdale Police Department, Hignight's one of ours, and people reaching out each and every day to ask to be part of that team. So it is absolutely outstanding, I'm excited about it, and they're still going to be great partners with us at those schools. If we need anything at all, they're going to be right there by our side, so. Any other questions?
I obviously feel confident with the same level of intent to be.
Yeah, their number one jobs are the same number one job. An SRO's number one job is to confront an active assailant with lethal force if necessary, and a CSSO's number one job is to confront an active assailant with lethal force if necessary. There's differences, you know, a CSSO can't arrest or write tickets, but an SRO can't search without a warrant and can't ask questions. So there's trade-offs to it, but we feel very confident, we have a great plan in place, and I appreciate the support that everybody. I went to Sonora Middle School, spoke with their whole staff for about 10 minutes, explained what we were doing, explained the same things that we're talking about right now, and asked for questions, not one question. So it was a very good, I believe will be a great transition, and I'm excited for these four people that we're going to be placing there. I want you to have full confidence in this, that we're placing some of the most experienced people that we have there, and so just know that as well, and that, I also let the middle school principals know that, that we are doing that, and they, gave them great confidence, it's just going to be a seamless transition, so. Any other questions? Okay. I think my section was a little shorter than Kendra's, too.
I was giving Mr. Donnell a hard time because of the number of slides in his presentation, I was worried on the link, but. I have two items on your agenda tonight, Board. The first is a legislative update. We're getting pretty close to the end of the session, we're thinking about one more week is the plan, that the legislature will recess on April 16th, and then leave the session open until May 5th, which will be signee dive, the end of the session. What that means is that all acts that don't have an emergency clause will go into effect 91 days after the May 5th date that they officially adjourn, unless there's an emergency clause. So the date that we're looking at for effective dates of the acts is August 4th. This happens every session, we're looking at, a lot of changes right as school is starting, but we just have to navigate as best we can. So, once the session is done, we'll look at, you know, what immediate changes need to be made, we'll be looking for, to ASBA for guidance on policy changes that will need to be made, and start rolling those out as quickly as possible. You'll also know that the Department of Education will begin their rule-making process, which can take a long time, they're still working on a few from the last legislative session, so even though the session's over, it almost picks up speed on the work that has to be So a few bills that we're watching closely, House Bill 1945 and Senate Bill 205, they're similar bills that basically move to allow the school choice process to cover both in-district and out-of-district transfers. One of them has a capacity provision, and I think it's to, no, I think it's 1945, has a capacity provision in it that 95% capacity is what we would use. So basically, this would be the state mandating what our in-district transfer process looks like, as open-ended, you can go to, with this application process, to pretty much any school as long as they're within 95% capacity. House Bill 1945 is further in the process, but we're also at the point in the session where you kind of get competing bills sometimes, that you think one may have stalled out, but another one stalls out and this one passes it. And so when you have law, or when you have bills that are covering the same topic, whichever one finishes last is the one that's in effect. So there'll be some of that sorting at the end of what the law actually turns out to be. And you'll see that blank bullet point there, because just before I came down to the meeting, or earlier this afternoon, one of the bills got moved from the watching closely to the, on the governor's desk, so we'll talk about that on the next slide. Senate Bill 451 is a bill that several superintendents in this area have been working on, offering some support for extreme student behaviors. It contemplates some DHS resources and task force that would be able to come in and assist public schools with extreme student behaviors. We're hopeful that at least some form of that bill makes it through so that we have some additional resources. We've been talking about Senate Bill 90, I think from my first legislative update, it's Senator English's bill that deals with public comment at school board meeting. It appears she's been very open to the amendments that have been requested, and the form that it is in now is one that is not much different than how you all operate. It would allow public comment at board meetings, it does say before business items, so we would navigate what that looks like. But it does limit the people who can comment to patrons of the district, parents of students in the district, or employees of the district, so that was one of the concerns that we talked about early on, is opening it up for, you know, national advocacy-type groups to come in and have a stage. It also has a provision that would limit the public comment to three minutes, and then a process for if public comment goes over 30 minutes, moving some of that public comment to the end of the meeting. So overall, it's definitely a bill that we can work through, there'll be some revisions on processes, but we're certainly pleased that the amendments, as they are now, are things that will be easy enough to work through. Again, that one hasn't made it through yet, but it appears to be getting some momentum, and I expect it will be, when this is all said and done. We talked about Senate Bill 484, I think it was filed right before your last meeting, and the original version of it allowed the Secretary of Education to fill a vacancy on a school board. There has been an amendment, the amendment now is very similar to the process that you all have used in filling a vacancy before, and that there's an application process and publication of that application, and it is not just a fill by the Secretary of Education. So, again, we'll continue to watch that because it directly affects your work, but the amendments to that bill look to be pretty good. These two bills are on the governor's desk. The first one, House Bill 1598, has to do with the state's accountability system. They'll be redesigning the accountability system with a new assessment system. It allows for no letter grades to be issued for the 23, 24 school year, and then design the new accountability system, issue the grades for 24, 25, but then there'll be sort of a appeal process for that grade. Again, that one's on the governor's desk, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be signed, but it's not signed yet. And this one just made it to the governor's desk this afternoon, House Bill 1724, which has to do with school board members' terms. We talked about that, probably the last meeting, maybe the one before. There have been some amendments to it, the meat of the bill now requires school boards to have either four or six-year terms, and one of the provisions that was concerning with us when it came out was shortening some of the terms of people who have already been elected. Those provisions are still in there, but it's not as big of an effect as when it first came out. So for example, it says that if your term's set to expire in 2026, it'll still expire in 2026. If your term is set to expire in 2028, it will still expire in 2028. The one that changes is the one of our one board member who's not here, 2027 will now expire in 2026. Again, I think there's probably some issues there, I've talked to actually a couple of attorneys today about it, and it makes them uncomfortable as well. I don't know how that will shake out, but that's what the current form of this bill is, and like I said, it's on the governor's desk, ready for her signature.
I was thinking I was 26, I mean 27, too.
What?
I thought I was 27.
I think you're either 26 or 28. Well, look, I pulled it up before I came up. Our website says you're 28, so. And finally, I won't go through all of these, you may want to look through them later. These are some bills that have already passed, there've been several bills about things that are going to have to be taught in school through various processes, one, the perils of communism, another firearm safety. We've talked about public school employees being released from their contracts by May 15th. The governor's access bill, which was kind of her higher ed version of LEARNS, some people call it LEARNS 2.0. I just want to tell you this, because I've gotten several questions on this. When you read the bill itself, you see some strike-throughs that might make you think AP classes are going away. It's just how the bill is written, AP classes are not going away. The bill moves to a more comprehensive word or term called accelerated classes, and that term includes AP, IB, concurrent credit, and CTE classes, with the idea that all of those courses will in some format have an opportunity to be weighted credit. And so I just want you to know that AP classes are not going away, there are going to be additional opportunities for weighted credit. But when you do read the bill, if you don't read through the whole thing, you see some strike-throughs of AP and you kind of panic, so that's not what's happening there. Again, there's a lot that will have to be fleshed out on that, but since several people have asked me specifically about that, I wanted to make sure you had that talking point, because I'm sure you'll get asked, too. We've already talked about minutes of your board meetings being posted and agendas being approved, we already do that for the most part. There are a couple of bills that would make amendments to the Freedom of Information Act, we're going to see where those shake out and if any changes need to be made. Most of them that we've looked at really just codify the way that you all are trained as far as how you conduct your business, so it's nothing that's really earth-shattering on that front. Once everything is passed, it might be beneficial for us to do a lunch and learn and really dive into some of these, and, you know, hearing from the curriculum and instruction team on what it actually looks like to implement some of these things may be beneficial. So if that's the case, we can look at that when we get a full list of everything and see what passes and doesn't. Oh, I'm sorry, I was like. Yeah, it sounded like back there.
I know you don't have the answers, but free breakfast for any student, like is that, is there funding type of?
Yes, we talked about this one time, and I'll mention it again, the funding is coming from the medical marijuana money.
That's kind of ironic.
I know, it's kind of, it's worth mentioning again, because it's kind of funny.
So, does the money come anyway, or do students have to be signed up to get that money, or how does that work?
I believe there'll be some reimburse, reimbursement process that school districts go through, and our food service already goes through that with the federal government, so I assume there'll be some sort of matching process with the state. There's nothing that the student has to fill out or do, they simply have to say, I'd like breakfast. Yeah. Are there any questions about legislation? Okay. The second item that I have for you is approval of the policy updates. You'll remember last month, I went into a little bit more detail about what these policy updates are. Essentially, we're moving to Section 6 of the model policies, as we slowly get there, incorporating all of those, and then there are some various kind of cleanup changes or minor changes that were brought forth by PPC that make a lot of sense. For example, how sick days, impersonal days accrue, nothing changed in the policy, there's just a table in there to make it more clear, allowing out-of-state college experience to count as teaching experience. They have been shared with both PPCs, I have gotten very little feedback, and so I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I would ask that you approve the updates to those policies.
I make a motion that we approve the policy updates as presented.
A motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the policy updates as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Cleveland. The first item on my portion of the agenda is the seeking approval of the March 2025 financial statements. That was in your board packet. The financial statement reflects that we're about 83% of the year has been completed for financial purposes. Our year-to-date revenues exceed our year-to-date expenditures by approximately 7.4 million. Our next large tax revenue period will be in May, and that's when we will see the collection of all those escrow payments for taxes on residential, so we should see that coming up here pretty soon. We're a little bit ahead of our, where we were at the same time last year on our collection of revenues. We're about where we need to be for expenditures. I did want to point out on vocational education, it looks like we've expended 94.32% of our budget, but that's a little bit of anomaly, because year-to-date, we have gotten about 546,000 in reimbursements for equipment that we've purchased for CTE, and so at the beginning of the year, we weren't expecting that. So if you take that out of the expenditures year-to-date, we're at about 67%, which is where we should be for the year. So I just wanted to point that out, because I was afraid that that might give you a little bit of pause when you look at that. The other supporting services reflects some spending from Treehouse Pantry, which was, we have received that as local donations, so even though that does look like that is out of line with budget, it really isn't, because we had additional revenue collected that is actually covering that. Our next payment for debt service will be due in May, and at that point, we will see approximately 7.6 million in principal and interest will be expended as expected on the budget. Are there any questions?
Do you have any updates on all of you four? And thank you for giving me my.
I do. Yes. Okay. I think, do, we need approval of this, and then I'll be happy to give an update on all of you.
Make a motion to approve the March 2025 financials. So a motion by Mr. Ramos and a second by Mr. Olmey to approve the March 2025 financials. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to step ahead and answer Dr. Cleveland's question about all of you. Oh, okay, all right, then if you don't mind, then I'm going to go ahead and do the disclosure. Okay. Okay. I have a related party transaction request or contract disclosure form. This is from Mr. James Crumbie, doing business as Crumbie Designs LLC. He is offering design services for various items within the district that would really be used like in t-shirt design, logo design, that type of thing. He said he's owner of Crumbie Designs and a teacher in the district. He knows the value of staying within budget, and he'll provide portable design services. So attached is also a resolution for your approval that would grant the district the ability to do business with him from April 8th of 2025 through April 7th of 2027.
Make a motion to approve the related party transaction for James Crumbie, Crumbie Designs. A motion by Mr. Ramos and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the related party transaction for Mr. Crumbie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. In reference to all of you, you should have all received an email this afternoon from Brandon Casto. He is our representative with all of you. It should have gone to your preferred email address that Ms. Smalling has on file for you. So there's just a link that you can click that will get you into the program. The next day or two, you should also, I will be sharing with you a document. It's really more of a PowerPoint presentation that will kind of give you kind of an overview of what is in the program, how you can access different things, and what they mean. It will kind of be a breathing, a living, breathing document in that as I get requests from each of you individually of how do I get to this part of the program, I'll be adding to that document so that if Mr. Emerson sends me a request about how to access something, I'll add that to the document so that at a later time, if Ms. Creek's looking for that same, that'll be available. And so there are some things that I will note in there that we're working with Mr. Casto as far as adding to the program as a functionality. One of the things that comes to mind is that when you get in there and you can look at the staffing, there's not a, the ability to search by name to be able to get to, like if you're looking for a Mr. Smith to see what their salary and benefits are, there's not a search function in the program for that. And so hopefully, as we progress through that, those items, they seem to be very open to trying to add that functionality to the programs. So any questions y'all have, if y'all will email those to me, I'll be happy to pass those along to him.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, Board and Dr. Cleveland. I don't have any photos today. So Central Junior High, over spring break, we finished that up along with both Springdale High and Harbor High baseball softball projects. So those are completed. So a quick update for the Professional Development Center. So on the second floor, we've got primer put on the walls. First coat of paint is on there. We've got the ductwork started on the first and the second floors. We had to put the roofing off last week because of all the rain, so this week they're fluke filling that and installing the TPO roof. And then we've started putting in the ceiling on the first floor. And then we finished putting in all the FRP panels in the restrooms on the second floor. So the finishes are going through really well on that project. We'll start putting in sound panels on the second floor, and then I'll have our custodial department go by and do the final grind on the concrete, probably in the next, probably next weekend. The industrial arts building over here, the old lock building, we're digging footings for the storm shelter. And then we did have some structural issues, so we're adding some footings to put in a new support bracket on part of that roof. All the insulation has been completed there. The electrical's been started. We should get temporary electrical power back next week. And then all the CMU block is going in right now for all the classrooms. And then we did have a meeting with the planning department of the city today, and they gave us a permit for the interior. So we'll get that tomorrow to continue on on the work we're doing, and then we'll get another permit for the exterior. And the exterior portions are just, there are two awnings. One will be on the north side and one on the south side. And then we're also going to add perimeter fencing. We've had a lot of foot traffic through there, so we're going to put some temporary fences up to keep that site separate from the public. And then also this week, actually last week, Pimple and I worked on the Harbor football field turf. We got that released, so it's in production right now. And we're set to start that on May 19th. As soon as soccer and everything's over, we'll start in on that project. We're shooting for about 28 or 29-day turnaround from tearing it out to being done. So we're working with our architect on some, we're going to redo that plastic fencing. It's all deteriorated, so we're going to go back with some black wrought iron like we did at Springdale. Do you guys have any questions on any of that?
Running out of stuff to do.
Yeah, yeah. We've completed two, but we're working on the next ones, so.
Now we're ready on for Friday, right?
Yep. Friday, I've got a baby bus reserved, so I'll have it. We'll bring it over and...
What's the venue?
I'm looking at LeAnn. I don't know.
We had just got back. She's had a family, so she just barely got back.
We'll figure it out. Yeah. But yeah, we'll have everything ready for Friday.
Did your drive to the clock? Do you have any water or wind damage from the weather the last few weeks?
We did have several leaks. Just a lot of them was because the roofs couldn't shed the water quick enough. So I mean, we probably had 200 leaks. We did have several lightning damage on fire alarms, some of the FOB systems. And then actually, School of Innovation Friday about noon took a lightning strike, knocked out the east generator and part of the building. So our guys, our electrical crew got there and started bypassing the transfer switches and getting the emergency lights and everything back on. I think they finished up Friday night into the night. We do have some prices. We've already got prices. We've got parts coming to replace the transfer switch that got hit. So we did have some damage. And then we've been working through the weekend and then this week on the roof leaks. So. Okay. All right, thanks.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Cleveland. My name is Valerie Hanna, and I am the SEA president, also a teacher here in Springdale. And this feels weird to say, but I'm very excited to be back after being gone for two months. I think there's a lot of people that get under you guys and are not as excited to be here, and for some reason, it just felt wrong to be gone for two months. So that being said, last month, we were able to elect two of our SEA members who will get to accompany myself and Ms. Callie Day to the NEA Representative Assembly this summer in Portland as Springdale delegates, Ms. Demetria Watts of SHS and Ms. Andrea Danenhauser of DTSOI. So they will be, Callie and I will be Arkansas delegates, and Ms. Watts and Ms. Danenhauser will actually be specific to Springdale that we are bringing them with us. I think it'll be also a great opportunity for them to see what all of that looks like and just fun time to have in Portland, so. In the past several months, the barrage of bills and legislative changes have been decidedly exhausting. And it's, and the unfortunate effect of all of this is that we're starting to get and seeing educator apathy, where we are exhausted, we don't even want to look at our news feeds or any of that stuff because it's just another day, another thing. But we do truly appreciate the efforts that are being made by Dr. Cleveland, the board, and Ms. Tisher to protect us with all of the new legislation that is being passed that can affect us. It was funny because as Ms. Tisher was going through her report, I was clicking stuff off of what I was going to say because I was like, yep, she got that one, she got that one.
You mean Ms. Clay?
Ms. Clay, oh my gosh. All right, Ms. Clay. I mean Ms. Clay.
I was really confused.
Yeah. Ms. Tisher's doing a great job, too.
Yeah. I thought she was like, you know, filling in the next role, like she wants to be curriculum. She wants to be legal.
She just does it all for us, right? One of the ones that is, one of the newest ones that has come up is House Bill 1939, which would cut off educators from the state national board bonus if they have not achieved the certification by July 1st of 2025. And if you don't know, getting your board certificate or your national boards takes about a year to do. So the fact that they have introduced it here at the end of March with a deadline of July means that essentially, if this bill were to pass, no one would get their national board bonuses anymore. Or no new person, I should say. And within the bill, it also makes it more difficult in certain areas for educators to get merit pay. Now, I will admit, and I am very grateful for the fact that I am in a school district where I don't have to worry as much about whether or not that merit pay is coming or not because of the pay scale that we do have. But that does lead me to worry about what funding might be retracted in the future, and that will eventually affect us. So just something to keep an eye on and maybe ask questions about. Now, back to the happier stuff. So we got an email today for that the scholarship applications have been opened up, and we are excited to look at the students from Harbor, SHS, SOI, and Archer who have applied for our future, our SEA Future Educator Scholarship. I know they're due by the 25th, and by the time we meet again, one of the announcements will be made, so we might be able to say a name then, but a couple of the others will still not be made, but at least we know they are coming. And finally, occasionally, SEA has the opportunity to endorse a candidate. A motion was made early last week to our board and was unanimously approved to endorse Mr. Eddie Ramos for reelection and in the upcoming school board election. We are excited to offer our full support to Mr. Ramos, and as he has been a consistent advocate for our educators and our support for professionals. Throughout his time on school board, he has been a great support to our association, and we believe that he is the kind of school board member that we need here in Springdale. We have encouraged all of our SEA members to show their support for Mr. Ramos. Even if they do not live in Zone 5, your support can still make a difference. We would also like to say thank you to Mr. Ramos for the continued advocacy and involvement in shaping the future of our Springdale schools. Thank you. Oh. Side note, we made a little flyer.
Nice.
Thank you.
You're getting a drip.
Can I get a thousand of those, please?
I, I, I guess you have to...
Thank you.
Do I say something, or?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Where's that location?
Uh, May 13th, we're going to...
Reaper. If you all will have me again, I will gladly rejoin another five years or four, six, or...
Somebody will have to tell you.
Yes.
We'll keep you on the team again. So that actually is score.
I appreciate it. That's a score meeting?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it is a score meeting. Nice. Graduation meeting.
Yeah. That is a long meeting. It's a long meeting.
Okay. All right. Everybody good? Anything else?
Yep.
That meeting is adjourned. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Good job. I signed a couple of those.
She liked it out of you.
Oh, I said, be silent.